Welcome, everyone. I call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. This meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation, and please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website, and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Very well. Counselor Davis let me know that he is attending an event at the high school and will be here as soon as he can. And as we know, Counselor Pineda-Nufeld, our vice president, is on parental leave. Congratulations to her and to the whole family. Pursuant to Rule 32, let it be known that this City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We will begin this meeting with a moment of silence. Are there any counselors who wish to honor members of our community? All right. Seeing none in particular, will everyone please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated. Next item, please.
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 9th, 2023.
Seeing no discussion, those minutes are approved. So colleagues, we have a few items to take out of order, and we're going to do these after the public hearings. So I'd like to suspend the rules to take a number of items out of order. The first is item 4.22. This is a resolution pertaining to Northeastern. After that, we will take up statement of interest regarding our school buildings. This is 7-1 and 7-2 that we'll take together. After that, we'll have a brief presentation from the administration on 717, which has to do with the Code of Conduct for boards and commissions, and then a brief presentation on the Bike Network Plan, which is 716. So with that, let's take up the public hearings first, and we're going to take 3.1, and after that, we're going to take off the table 5.1, which was unfinished at our last meeting.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Eversource to install six feet of conduit in Bow Street from utility pole 39 over 9 to a point of pickup at 114 Professors Row.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the petition?
Jackie Duffy.
Ms. Duffy, please.
Hi, who are you tonight? Can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Anstar Electric would like to install approximately six feet of conduit on Bow Street, and this is to supply electric service to 71 Bow Street.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the item? Seeing no one? I declare the public hearing closed. So this is in Ward 3 on Bow Street. I confirmed with Ms. Duffy this morning that this will not dig up the newly paved and newly striped Bow Street whatsoever. This is work just on the sidewalk, so I'd just like that to be known for the record. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, that item is approved.
So the next item we'll take out of order is item 5.1, a grant of location from Your Space Landscape and Construction, Inc., applying to install 85 feet of conduit in Professor's Row from utility pole 289 over 13 to a point of pickup at 114 Professor's Row.
I now declare this public hearing open. Could you please identify yourself for our record?
Stephen Pepe, President, Your Space Landscape, representing my client Tufts University.
Go ahead, please.
We are looking for grant of location at 114 Professor's Row. We are going from a utility pole, which is UPL 28913, directly across the street to 114 Professor's Row, and we're running approximately 85 linear feet of conduit, two three-inch conduits. The purpose is to feed some new equipment that the university has put in that building.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this? If there is anyone, please use the raise hand function online. All right. Seeing none, we will declare this public hearing closed. Chair Burnley, how would you like to proceed? Any further discussion? That item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
The next item to take out of order is item 4.22, a resolution by Counselor Burnley condemning Northeastern University's anti-union behavior.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Before I speak on the item, I'd like to sponsor a speaker. Sean.
Please. Counselor Kelly would like to sign on, and please, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for our records. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to the City Council and Counselor Willie Burnley Jr. My name is Sean Spinney. I am a resident of Somerville at 37 Josephine Avenue and a graduate student at Northeastern. So apologies. I'm here to speak about Northeastern's pervasive anti-union tactics. Northeastern University could not function without the work of graduate student workers. We teach classes, we perform research, and we uphold the mission of Northeastern. And yet, and we are fighting to be able to afford the essentials like rent in greater Boston, dental care, which the university does not provide, and basic workplace protections. But the university is pulling out all of the stops in an attempt to stop graduate workers from unionizing. They are putting out false statements. They are putting out anti-union propaganda, and they are going as far as fully denying the fact that graduate employees perform work for the campus. And all of this is to stop us from getting what is our federal right, the right to a vote at the National Labor Relations Board. And Northeastern University's anti-union tactics matters to our city of Somerville. Somerville is on the forefront of a new generation of union activism. We've seen some of the first cafes in the country, first coffee shops unionized, as well as we have dozens of families of graduate workers from different universities across the greater Boston area. Northeastern's goal is to undo and destroy the rights of all private sector graduate workers from unionizing. What this would mean is it wouldn't just stop our campaign, but if they're successful, currently-unionized graduate workers at Harvard, MIT, and Tufts, some of which already have contracts, would lose their federal protections. Without decent union wages, thousands of graduate workers and families living in our communities will suffer, and we hope that your support through this resolution will put the university on notice that the community is watching and that grad workers, like all workers, deserve a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. And I think our resident and this brave unionizing worker said it best. I'll just add on briefly to say that Somerville is a union town, as they say. I'll say city. And we've seen so much great activity in our community around unionization recently, but unfortunately, we've also seen a coming backlash against unionized workers and folks who are trying to form unions. As the chair of licenses and permits, I just want to make it very clear to our public that union busing tactics will not be looked upon kindly by the city of Somerville. And I'm hoping to take a number of steps moving forward, particularly in the licenses and permits committee, to educate folks about their rights as a union and to hold accountable any institution within the city of Somerville that is knowingly and repeatedly denying workers their rights, whether those workers are on college campuses or making coffee or, you know, in the halls of our schools. And so I just want everyone to know that when it comes to labor, the city of Somerville and this council has their back. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much for being here tonight and for doing the really difficult work of going out and unionizing folks in the private sector. You know, I talk to residents all the time who live in the city of Somerville, and folks have come to me with statistics like 10% of the city of Somerville are graduate students. That is a hugely significant percentage of our population, and most of these graduate students are working at the most prestigious universities in the country with multi-billion-dollar endowments, and yet folks like yourselves are paid starvation wages. And we know that the best way to a good and decent life in the United States has been through working with your coworkers, unionizing your workplace, and collectively bargaining over your rights and your dignity at work. So I am so sorry that one of these multi-billion-dollar prestigious institutions in the city in this, in this community is bringing these types of tactics to bear, these illegal tactics to bear on you all as workers and you all as unionized workers. I hope Northeastern listens to not just us, but the many of folks who have your back alongside your coworkers, who have your backs as well, and recognizes your union gets to the bargaining table and ultimately allows all of you to live with some dignity. The number of graduate students that I talked to in the city of Somerville who literally will probably not be here come September 1st, who can't afford to pay their medical bills, who can't send their kids to childcare, who can't feed their families, is just asinine. And so I want to make sure we highlight this 10% of the population here in Somerville who continue to struggle to stay here and feed themselves and feed their families. And thank you for the work that you're doing and keep up the work and the strong fight and, you know, solidarity. We got your back.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Having been the partner of someone who went through a grueling five-year PhD program and seeing how many hours my partner and her lab mates put in working in labs and teaching, I've seen the necessity of grad student unions up close and personal, and I couldn't support these students more strongly in their quest for, to organize here for just a humane existence. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. I'd also like to co-sponsor this, as would Counselor Scott. And I'll just say thank you for the offer, giving us as a city council the opportunity to support you. And on a personal level, as a former grad student myself in a department that is now unionized, was not when I was there, I have some sense of how hard this work is and how brave you all are. So I really want to wish you well and the best of luck on your campaign. Thank you for being here tonight. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item that we are going to take out of order is item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting authorization for the superintendent of schools to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Benjamin G. Brown School.
Thank you. And can we take up 7-2 as well?
Item 7.2 is a request of the mayor requesting authorization for the superintendent of schools to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Winter Hill Community Innovation School.
Thank you, colleagues. This is a very exciting moment. We have here tonight Ms. Peaks to answer any questions that folks might have and to give a kind of brief introduction to what is before us and why we're voting on it tonight. Please, Ms. Peaks.
Thank you, President Ewan Campen. So very, very briefly, I'm happy to answer any questions, but just sort of how we got to this point. In late March, the school committee voted to have the school district and the city partner to write a statement of interest. For that, that particular vote was for the Winter Hill Community Innovation School at that time. Immediately after that vote, the city, city staff and the school staff got together and we decided the best option would be to submit two statements of interest for the Brown and for the Winter Hill, being the oldest schools in our district. So we have two before you tonight, obviously. These MSBA, I'm sure a lot of you know have specific requirements, one of them being that there are votes required by both the school committee and the city council authorizing the superintendent to submit these statements of interest. The statements of interest are due tomorrow, and this has just happened to be the timeline we fell upon. So the school committee voted unanimously to approve this at their last meeting on April 3rd, and so here we are before you this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from counselors? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Director Peaks.
I'm the interim communications director, Director of Communications and Grants. Excuse me.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just a question around the actual acquisition. What exactly are you looking for from the Mass School Buildings Association? You know, I've worked across the state, particularly in public school districts that are looking for schools to be rebuilt. Are you, what's the timeline? Are you looking for both of them to get done? Is it, you know, you're prioritizing one or the other? Just if you could explain a little bit of the process for folks, I think that would be super helpful.
Absolutely. So the short answer, I'll elongate a little bit, but the short answer is that there's no specific ask. What we're doing right now is sort of getting the projects on the radar of the MSBA. We have no sort of expectation. We're hoping that they'll be considered favorably, but the city and the school district are both committed to addressing these buildings for the longer or shorter term. We know that, we've just been through it at the high school, right? We know it takes a number of years. So really, what this is to do is just to get us on the radar. This is a very competitive process, very small number of schools receive approval or funding. So we know that we may likely have to resubmit in the future. As to prioritizing, unfortunately, the MSBA does require that we submit separate applications for each school, so we would have liked to combine them to one application. We can't do that. And it also does require that we select a priority school, and just based on the building's size and the needs, we did select Winter Hill as a priority. Does that mean we're prioritizing one over the other? Not necessarily. It's just a requirement of the MSBA.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I was just going through the documentation. It's extremely helpful, but that ask exactly, I was like, where can I find this in here? So just basically, we're getting in the queue.
Correct.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And just to follow on that, I know that this is an issue of great importance to large members of the public, and it's also a kind of nuanced technical process. So what I've come to understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that these are not, you're not going to the state and saying, "We want to build a school this size in this location, and we need this much money." You're demonstrating the need to dramatically enhance or rebuild or fix the schools, and this is more about demonstrating the need than it is asking for a specific outcome right now. Is that about right?
Exactly. None of the questions in there are asking what we're proposing to do, what we'd want to do. They just are getting the condition of the buildings. Yep.
Counselor Burnley, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Chair. I'm grateful for the school committee for doing this as quickly as they could and getting it to us on time. I've had some conversations that have, you know, put my vote at, my mind at ease and my vote on the table. I'm just curious, in terms of this, the criteria within these statements, they mention prevention of loss of accreditation as like a, as a subject that, that this, that this statement is in favor of. Could you, could you just like elaborate a little bit about why these buildings would be in risk of losing their accreditation?
Can you, I'm not sure where exactly you're looking.
That's not the top of...
Is it in the statement of, in its form itself? I am, so I have them in front of me, but I don't know that specific answer. I'm not the subject matter expert on the MSBA process. I would just say that we know both of these buildings are in need of upgrading, repairs, renovation, rebuild, any number of things, and as a school district and as a city, we're committed to working towards whatever we need. And again, this is just sort of like getting on the radar, first step in the process. If, if we do get a favorable consideration for one or both, that's when all of the sort of nitty-gritty conversations would happen. So beyond truly just providing the information about the state of the buildings themselves, there's no other sort of plan or real plan on the ground. I will say that there is work that obviously has started. There's a lot of planning and feasibility work that needs to go into that. We're no stranger to that in Somerville. So the only thing I can really reiterate is that we are just committed to moving these forward however we can. This is just sort of one tool in our toolbox to do that, so it is not the only thing.
Thank you. Absolutely. And I want to just make clear, I share that commitment, and I trust the school committee to lead on those conversations as it pertains to the needs of the students and the needs of the buildings themselves. Quite frankly, once it comes back to the council and y'all are ready for us to cash a check, just let us know for how much. And I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to put the city's money to good use. Thank you.
I realize I should have been saying through the president, so first of all, I apologize for that, and also I realize I didn't answer your specific question, and I'm sorry for that. I don't know all of the answers, but I will try.
Thank you. Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
So I just want to know what I know from being the chair of the school building committee. And first, I want to slightly answer Mr. Burnley's. The same issue was brought up on the high school, a loss of accreditation. I believe it might be the building conditions, but I don't want to speak for that, not being an expert. For those, you know, I think this is going to be a complicated journey, I want to explain, because we're going to have an enrollment study. You look at the school system and this broad spectrum, and then you hone in into the buildings as what, what, what we can fit through the entire system and into these specific buildings. And we're going to go, this is going to be a complex journey because we have buildings, we have tight spaces, existing buildings, we need to consider relocation costs, maybe, maybe not. There's no, I think, I want to make sure everybody knows this is going to be a journey that everybody needs to participate and look into. That's what I've learned. I saw with Director Rach kind of asking what are the next steps? We're trying to put something together, but basically, right now, it's looking at the enrollment study, and right now, the Winter Hill is, and I have an order about that, they're doing like a building conditions assessment. So that's like the first part of that journey, I want to say. And let me know if I can make a motion if nobody else has any questions.
Seeing no further questions, motions are in order. Please.
A motion to reconsider and hope that it...
Wait. We need to actually approve first.
Oh, motion to approve, sorry.
Motion to approve both items has been made. Is there any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this? All right.
On the motion, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Scott.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Ed.
Yes.
With nine pastors in favor, nine opposed, and two absent, that motion is approved.
Excellent. And that was for both?
That was for both.
Excellent. Are there further motions before us?
Sorry. I have a motion to reconsider and hope that it fails for items 7.1 and 7.2.
Excellent. So the motion to reconsider is before us? This is so that we can get this fully done, 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 and actually have it submitted tomorrow? If you would like this to be done, 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 and have it submitted tomorrow, vote no.
On the motion, Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Scott.
No.
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 Nay.
No. No.
No.
With no pastors in favor, nine opposed, ten two absent, reconsideration has failed, and those items are approved.
Excellent. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Next item that we are going to take out of order is item 7.17, a communication of the mayor conveying the newly established code of conduct for board, commission, and committee members.
I believe we have Ms. Corijo here from the mayor's office, virtually.
Can you hear me okay? It seems maybe not.
Yes.
Oh, yes, great, okay. Hannah, I'm here to legislate with the liaison with the mayor's office. I'm a little under the weather, I would be with you all tonight. Thank you for taking this item out of order. Just want to give a brief update on what it is and how we hold it out, and happy to take any questions, or if you all want to send it to committee for discussion, happy to have a discussion in committee as well. But I am excited to be presenting this to you all tonight. This is a new document that is only applicable to board and commission members, and this is a great step forward in terms of ensuring that all of our board and commission meetings are held in safe spaces where all voices can be heard and valued. So this is just one piece of the much larger reevaluation of our entire board and committee appointment process. When the mayor first took office, she tasked all city staff with, you know, centering equity and inclusion and access in all the work that we do, and that certainly applied to boards and commissions. So we've been deep in it since then and are glad to be able to take this step. And, you know, in terms of the rollout itself for the document, we are requiring that all board and commission members do sign this. This will also apply to any new board and commission members. So in order to roll it out for existing folks, we did an internal training with all of our staff liaisons. We then did three, a series of three workshops. The last one was earlier today for all members. We had, I would say about 15 members at each one of those workshops, answered, you know, predominantly spent the time in those meetings answering questions, just to make sure that everybody feels comfortable with this document. In no way are we trying to be punitive here. We just are trying to make sure that, you know, we can all hold each other to this higher standard and to give everybody a tool to do so. So, and I've also just, you know, so you all are aware, I've made myself available to any board and commission members that want to have a one-on-one conversation about it. Again, our goal is to get everybody to feel comfortable signing the document, and happy to take any questions or talk about it in committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Corijo. Are there any questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. We will place that item on file and move on to our next items.
And the next item is item 7.16, a request of the mayor requesting approval of the citywide bicycle network plan.
All right. We are joined by Director Rossin from the Mobility Department. Thank you very much for being here. And colleagues, we're going to have a presentation on the Bike Network Plan, and after that, we'll talk about next steps. If there are questions, we can take those as well. Director, please.
Good evening, President, and through you to the Honorable Counsel. My name is Brad Rossin. I serve the city as Director of Mobility in OSPCD. President, I'm proud to present the council and our constituents with the completed citywide bicycle network plan. City staff have kept the council informed and engaged in our public planning process over the past two years with regular updates and discussions in your traffic and parking committee. The citywide bicycle network plan establishes a vision for a safe, connected network of streets and paths in every Somerville neighborhood. The plan establishes ambitious timelines to build out this network, and it creates predictability for our residents and for our stakeholders from year to year. Streets were selected from an extensive community input process, as well as data analysis on crashes, traffic accounts, bicycle and pedestrian counts, topography, land use, demographics, and community destinations. Most of the work was performed in-house by our great city staff, and we had a lot of fun leading community bike rides, tabling on street corners, administering multilingual surveys, in addition to the more traditional public meetings. I'd like to recognize, Mr. President, the tireless work of our core project team. Senior Planner Viola Augustine served as project manager. Senior Planner Justin Schreiber and Outreach and Engagement Planner Kate White served as primary support. But make no mistake, President, this is not a mobility division plan. This is a city of Somerville plan. Engineering, parking, DBW, fire, finance, communications, SOIA, schools, HHS, OSC, and public space urban forestry, all have their fingerprints on this plan. Official city policy documents, including Vision Zero, Climate Forward, and Summer Vision, called for creation of a citywide bicycle network plan. The mayor and city council advocated for this plan to be created, and together you have directed resources to support the planning and implementation of this critical work. President, we are respectfully requesting a formal vote of this council in support of this plan, but we do anticipate having more substantial discussions in committee with you all. So through you tonight, I would welcome any questions that the council may have at this time.
Thank you very much, Director. I welcome any questions. I also just want to give a brief procedure update. So it's my intention to refer this to traffic and parking. a brief procedure update. So it's my intention to refer this to traffic and parking and to work with Chair Gomez-Moakad to schedule a public hearing, which is not legally required, but this is a very important document, and I think it's very important that we give our constituents a chance to weigh in. That date has not been set. We're going to target, hopefully, in the first half of May, but we will certainly get, we will be working with the communications department to make sure that the date and the details are shared widely. It is up to the council if we wish that to be of the whole or of the committee. We don't need to make that decision now. And there will be opportunities in committee, of course, to ask lots and lots of detailed questions, but I also, you know, this is a live issue before us, so I welcome any questions if there are some tonight as well. But there don't have to be. Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
For those in the public that are listening, can you just say very briefly the importance of having a plan and like this, as we, as we see, we're doing many, many projects across the city, and sometimes emergencies, sometimes not. Can you clarify for the public how important it is to have this, to have some cohesion in our city?
Thank you, President. Through you, appreciate the question. Today, we have a public safety challenge on our streets, as you and your constituents well know. We have too many crashes, too many near misses. The science is in protected bike facilities and low-stress, low-volume backstreet neighborhoods are proven techniques to save lives and to reduce public safety challenges. They also improve quality of life. Every community meeting, every community process, every happiness survey, our residents have told us that they are happier. They feel more safe and satisfied in their communities when they have safe streets. President, I would note that we, together, this council, the mayor's administration, past and present, have made important strides in building out the beginnings of a connected network. But you all know that it is a relatively fragmented network at this point, and despite the great progress that we have made over the past five years, we really need to scale up the pace and velocity of change. You all have asked for a strategic plan to create predictability and guidance for all of our diverse stakeholders. No matter how you see the issues, having a roadmap for the future will help us save lives, will help us improve quality of life. And the last thing I'll note is it will help accelerate the transition to a low-carbon transportation future. So I hope that that's a helpful summary for, you know, in answer to your question, counselor.
I also want to emphasize the idea of connectedness and continuity and predictability. I want to make a quick note of a friend of mine who lives in the suburbs, way close to the border with Providence. And the first thing she said, "I like driving here because it's, everything's, I can tell where I need to go." And I thought that was from someone coming from the suburbs. That was a good observation. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Burnley, then Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, congratulations, first off. I, we've had a number of conversations about particularly this plan, and I have some small inkling of how much work has gone into this, how many departments who are involved in the creation of this plan, the amount of data that undergirds it from crash sites to the amount of vehicles on particular streets to, I mean, there's, there's sections in here where we, on this document, where you can see communities of concern. And, you know, I want to just really emphasize for folks who are concerned about where this plan would lead, particularly for parking, how incredibly important this is as a public health matter and as a public safety matter. This plan is here because we've lost people on our streets to vehicular crashes, to poor conditions, from a lack of specificity and separation between different road users, and to a, quite frankly, to a culture that says that one group can monopolize all of our streets, and anyone else who wants to take part in our community has to get out of the way. This plan is going to allow foresight for our community. It is going to allow safety, and I truly believe it will save lives as we build it out and as people can more safely and calmly and happily maneuver our streets. So I just think this is incredible. It, you know, it is the beginning of a marathon, even though it took a marathon to get here. But I think this is a great, great start to the community that I know Somerville can be. I will just ask a quick question about timelines for design guides and other guides that are, I know that you've planned to accompany this document. So could you just give a brief overview of what other guides and booklets you expect to be coming along with this, and when you expect your departments to have them? Thank you.
Through the President, thank you for the kind words and compliments, and I'll make sure to relay them to staff. And thanks for your engagement, Counselor, in answer to your question about some of the implementation documents that this plan calls for. Staff are already working on design manuals, on strategic engagement plans, on citywide bike parking plans, on a build-out plan for this public-owned Blue Bikes system. So we're really, really excited and are already getting to work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to echo my colleagues' gratitude for the work that went into this. Clearly, it was an immense, immense amount of labor. Folks are going to have questions about how exactly we're going to implement some of the new infrastructure. I did, having looked through it, and I know for a fact, one constituent contacted me earlier this evening with specific questions about how new infrastructure was going to be implemented on their street. How would you recommend that folks deal with those questions? You want them to bring them to us, and we can bring them to you? Do you want them to, is there someone they should directly contact in your, in your division?
Through the President, thanks for the question, and thanks for relaying that constituent concerns, and we would invite all counselors to continue to do so. It is important to be very, very clear with the council and with our constituents, individual street projects will continue to have community engagement processes. However, the baseline assumptions in this community-based plan will be the baseline and the starting place for discussions about future street design. Constituents can best get in touch with our staff at transportation@somervillema.gov, which is a staff address that reaches eight staff in transportation and mobility. You can sign up for our newsletter. We've got 1,500 people who are signed up on that list already, and we just want to get the word out in every way possible. We will continue to show up on street corners and table. We will continue to work with community-based partners to make sure that we are bringing the content to the people and not surprising our constituents and our stakeholders. So is an open-door policy, Counselor, and we'd love to work with you with that specific constituent and any others that may be working with you all. Thanks.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Following on Counselor Wilson's question, I want to make sure the public understand, I think you have the, it's a plan. It's the baseline assumptions. You haven't figured out the details. That's when you hire a traffic engineer. You work with your engineers and you hash out all the details. So this is something for the public. There might be something, I'm about to build a cycle track for as part of my project, and there's a manhole on the way, and we might, it's brick, and I might not be able to move it. And we're trying to, you know, how do we design this so we can be, have a continuous cycle track? So those little details will get hashed out in the process, and the community will talk. There might be a tree on the way. There are many things. So I just want the public, it's a plan. It's our intent all across the way. Thank you.
Through the President, thank you. That is correct. Staff will continue to work on specific design processes, and most of the network connections articulated in this plan are not yet designed and have not yet had community processes initiated.
Counselor Scott.
Thanks. Obviously, this is great. I guess when I look at the implementation section, Mr. President, I wonder about how we can, how maybe help facilitate that. Is, you know, as I look at this, there's definitely a mixture of implementations that are possible, from quick build to longer-term projects. And quick build, to be fair, is specked out as a 14-month project. But would it be a good idea for us to maybe formalize this into a Safe Streets ordinance similar to what Cambridge has, to ensure that as new street projects are coming up, they have certain minimum thresholds in terms of hard concrete curbing and separation that isn't just, just paint?
It is my understanding from our discussions in traffic and parking that very much so. And I'll let Director Rossin speak to that. I know that some of our colleagues have already begun work on such an ordinance.
Mr. President, through you, thank you for the question, Counselor. Yes, we agree that we will pursue every opportunity, including working with this council, to ordain progress towards not only this Safe Streets plan, but every other element of our Safe Streets work. I do want to remind constituents and counselors that streets that are safe and accessible for people biking are safer for people walking, safer for people driving, safer for people who are traveling with mobility assistance devices or mobility impairments. And so it's a big tent, and complete streets and safe streets design benefit all of us. And we would look forward to continuing our work in coordination with you all, who have been doing the front-end work on a Safe Streets ordinance modeled after the Cambridge one. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley.
On that point, I just want to quickly give an update to the community around that, the Safe Streets ordinance. I am hoping, and I am looking very tentatively at our legislative analysts, I am hoping that we will have something in this committee within a month or so, so that we can, you know, do the, the good work of hashing out together. Once, you know, we, we have a little bit of a, a few conversations with city staff about it, but we are, I would say, 80, 80 to 85% of the way there at this point. And I'm very, very excited for us to not only have a plan, but to have an implementation timeline as a matter of law, because, you know, Somerville, I'm going to, I'm going to say something critical, not about this plan, but in past plans. Somerville is a city with a lot of plans. It has some great ideas. If we don't do anything with those plans, they mean as much as a paperweight in a bathroom. So I want us to actually implement this and to get our streets safer. And I know that that is the, the will and the intent of every department in this city, and I'm looking forward to getting that on the books. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I just want to associate myself with all of the gratitude that has been raised tonight. I'm just incredibly, incredibly thankful to you and your staff and to all of the members of the public who commented on this, who attended all the, the events. I also think it's very clear that, you know, there are people like me in our community who, they want a bike lane on every street, right? I bike with a toddler at a daycare every morning. This is not a complicated issue for me. I absolutely have constituents who are very, very, very concerned about bike lanes and who are very concerned about loss of parking. And I want to be, there's a story that I like to share on kind of how I've come to view this, which is, I was biking home from work one day, and someone opened their door into me. I got doored. This is an extremely common and occasionally very, very, very serious, dangerous thing that can happen to cyclists. I got hit kind of into a fire hydrant, and I was not hurt. My bike was a little damaged, and I turned to scream at the person who had just doored me. And I work at the Longwood area, so there are a lot of people going to hospitals there. And it was a young mother carrying a kid on a breathing machine who was clearly, like, frantic and was looking for a hospital and was getting out of a car, right? So not someone I'm going to scream at, someone who is basically blameless in this situation, right? And what I take away from that is that conversations about bike safety, infrastructure, they're not about blame. This is not about who is right and who is wrong and who has a right to space. This is about getting rid of conflict like that. Someone like me should be able to get to and from work without getting hurt. Someone like this young mother should be able to not worry about hurting someone, taking her kid to the doctor, right? It is our responsibility as people who help run the city to create safe streets, to get the bikes the hell out of the streets where that kind of conflict can happen. So if you are someone who loves bikes, this is the plan for you. And if you are someone who hates bikes, you should support getting them off the streets and onto their own bike lanes. So I am thrilled to get to work on this. Thank you very much, and I look forward to scheduling a public hearing on this as soon as possible.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Counselor.
Is that insurance? Yes, we were prepared to drive.
And that does indeed return us to the regular order of business. And item 4.1, an order by Counselor Strezzo, that the chief of police and relevant departments discuss the use and effectiveness of the community alert system and advise if an update to the system is necessary.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. This is one of the takeaways that I had from the conversation of the community safety meeting that happened at the Healy School a couple of weeks ago. I'm asking if this can please go to Housing and Community Development?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Let's refer that to Housing and Community Development. That item is approved.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselor Strezzo, that the director of mobility install and/or replace decals in all business districts, informing the public that bicycles, e-bikes, and motorized scooters are forbidden by city ordinance from being ridden on sidewalks.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. This is a request from some constituents, and I modernized it. What do you say?
The great ill order.
Yeah, you know it. Updating and modernizing that e-bikes and motorized scooters should not be on sidewalks. And I think that's a pretty important conversation to have as well. So send this along, please, to committee.
Would you prefer Housing and Community Development, Traffic and Parking?
Traffic and Parking is fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. That item is approved with a copy to Traffic and Parking.
Item 4.3.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a note for the public, e-bikes are not allowed on any sidewalks, anywhere, business district or otherwise, state law. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
If I may speak on that, definitely. We know that that doesn't always happen. So we definitely, you know, that, that's what concerns me, is that they're so fast. And I'm hoping that we can have a greater conversation on, on like how we put some kind of, some kind of, like, I, some kind of, like, bell, or I don't know, some kind of signal from behind.
No.
I'm sorry. So some kind of signal from, from people from behind, so that we can all use the, the roads together, or I'm sorry, the sidewalks together with that, or the, you know, safe ways. I think a lot about the path that I take. I do a lot of community paths, walking, and sometimes there's scooters or bikes that, that speed pass, electric bikes that speed fast, and sometimes there's toddlers on the path as well. And there's not really a signal from behind. So I'm hoping in the future that when we modernize, as we modernize with e-bikes and scooters, that we really find some kind of signal from behind that comes. I'm a big bell fan, I'm old school, but I'm hoping that we can really have a conversation and talk about that as we modernize how we get around in Somerville. So yeah, totally agree, Counselor Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you.
And item 4.3 is an order by Counselor Strezzo, that the director of economic development update this city council regarding the strategy and projected timeline for a community center in Union Square, including plans for a feasibility study.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. I'm happy to take this up in my committee unless you have a suggestion of where another committee is going to go, but I'm happy to take it up in HCD.
That makes, I know that similar orders-
Yeah.
I don't know if, that there are any actively in a committee, so I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Approve this and refer it to Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. And pardon me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, yes.
I know, right? Mr. President, I don't mind waiving the readings of the two orders and sticking them in committee of the next two. It's fine.
Counselor Strezzo moves to waive the reading of 4.4 and 4.5 and have them approved. Is that right?
Send it to committee of Public Works, Public Utilities, Public Works.
Those items are referred to Public Utilities and Public Works.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 4.6, a communication by Counselor Strezzo conveying a report of the children's cabinet meetings of March 14th, 2023, and April 11th, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm still waiting on information on this, so if we can hold this and put this on next agenda.
Certainly. We'll leave this on the table.
And that's it.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselor Klingon, that this council's committee on public utilities and public works discuss the Somerville Internet Access Task Force's recommendation regarding municipal broadband.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, this is just a, I had cleared out the other order regarding the, all the recommendations. We had discussed that, but there is a ongoing discussion that's happening around broadband with community members. I did have one meeting where I had somebody from the Municipal Broadband Association of Massachusetts come in, and looking forward to this order ending up in the, in my committee so that we can take it up at the next meeting on May 7th, I think it is, with some folks from- take it up at the next meeting on May 7th, I think it is, with some folks from the, from Cambridge to speak about their efforts for broadband. So ongoing discussion. Hopefully we can get somewhere. You know, it's, well, that's it.
Thank you very much, Counselor Klingon. We will refer this item to Public Utilities and Public Works. And Counselor Gomez-Moakad, if you wouldn't mind taking the presidency for a moment.
Madam Clerk, can you read the next item?
Item 4.8 is an ordinance by Counselor Ewan Campan, amending section 9-116 of the Code of Ordinances, the noise ordinance, by prohibiting loud and disruptive construction activities on Saturdays and evenings.
Counselor Ewan Campan?
Thank you, Madam President. There is a lab building in construction in Ward 3. And they recently went through part of the construction that involved blasting bedrock, which is as disruptive as it sounds. And for this period, they blasted bedrock basically from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day, every weekday. And then on Saturdays, from 9:00 to whatever it is, 6:00 or 7:00, when they're, basically they filled the entire time that they were allowed to do that with blasting bedrock. And it was really, really, really disruptive. And this is in a community that understands construction needs to happen, construction is disruptive. This was extreme. During the course of that, it was made apparent to me that, in fact, some of our neighboring communities, including most notably Boston, do not allow this sort of construction to happen on Saturdays, on weekends, and have much stricter hours on weekdays as well. That got my attention. And I reached out to our Inspection Services Department, who were incredibly helpful and provided me with an overview of how this sort of activity is regulated in a lot of our surrounding communities. And I've attached a table that Mr. Zano from ISD prepared. And then they also helped me create a list of the really, really disruptive construction, things like blasting bedrocks, things like cutting metal and concrete. And then I worked with the Solicitor's Office to come up with this draft amendment that I would like to, to refer to Legislative Matters. I, because I don't serve on that committee, I just want to flag a few issues that I, that I want to explain how I landed on this. So for one thing, there will be times where this sort of work does need to happen on, on Saturdays and potentially after 5:00 PM. And so the amendment has a carve-out that allows ISD or the, the enforcement official to, in consultation with the Ward Counselor, to, to grant exemptions to this. There's also, I think I, I went back and forth on should we use noise itself, or should we call out specific activities? And landed, my own opinion is that the noise ordinance is quite flawed in its enforcement. I think we all know this. And so I, I've really been convinced that it's, it's beneficial to call out specific activities. It's just, you can't do these on Saturdays or after 5:00 PM, as opposed to continuing to rely on this sort of flawed approach. I have not yet gotten input from our OSPCD, from our Infrastructure and Asset Management, and I very much welcome that. And I ask that this be sent to Legislative Matters for deliberation. Thank you.
Any further comments? Counselor Wilson signs on? Hasn't.
I have a question.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad has a question.
So, so you're saying, just to clarify, sorry, everything, things like rail delivery, spatter, and the last thing, the back cameras, by special permit, correct? On weekends?
I don't believe that it's literally a special permit. It is by special permission of the enforcement. It would be ISD, basically. Not a special permit of the planning board.
My apologies. The question I have is, we need, being very familiar with this, because I'm building, right, have a project in a residential area in my other job. I think we always want to have, I think I would recommend going, if ISD is okay with it and they can do it, have a special permit. So if someone starts working, they have, they have proof that they have it to, to do it. Because there are times due to logistics, the conditions, these things might have to happen on a weekend, you know, especially on a tight site. Sometimes certain pile driving, I'm doing it right now, it's actually not that loud, believe it or not. It depends what you're hitting and the soil conditions. So I just want to make sure we leave a little room here for error. I agree with you that people shouldn't be, that's a, but I would recommend that maybe if ISD is open, it's by special permit, so they have, we, we know all our contractors, they all push, they're working until 8 o'clock at night behind my house right now. And I don't even want to even say what else is going on. But, so I think we need, we need some proof. All right. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I very much appreciate this. My, my personal trauma on this was during virtual kindergarten in the pandemic, when the building less than 10 feet from the, from the bedroom windows from the house was getting jackhammering done from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day. And then for that big chunk on Saturday. I am looking forward to this getting a lot of different discussion in committee. I'm curious about what community you're going to send this to. But I, I would like to ensure that it isn't just simply a authorization by, for example, the Inspection Services Director. Because I get calls about this when, for example, the entire skyscraper construction crew was working on a federal holiday. And it took me quite a while to figure out why that was happening. So, yep, thank you for bringing this. As somebody who has a lot of sheet-driving construction and high-rise in my district, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that Counselor Kelly, Gomez-Moakad, and Scott wanted to sign on, because of Wilson, Strezzo. And this item is referred to Legislative Matters.
And the next item is item 4.9, an order by Counselors Wilson and Klingon, that the Chief of Police provide this council with a report containing the information requested within for all incidents where a firearm was discharged since January 1st, 2018.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, my neighborhood's been dealing with what feels like regular gunfire incidents for years now. It became clear at the community safety meeting at the Healy School recently that the scale of the problem is, is news to some people in the, in the neighborhood. Or I guess outside the neighborhood, people with ties to the neighborhood who may not live right there. And just, there are people in the city who don't realize how routine, sadly, gunfire has become in our city. So I'm, I'm just looking to get some data on the scope of this. I spoke with the administration prior to submitting this. And the, the things I'm asking for are, as I understand it, things that the police department should be able to pretty easily put together. So looking forward to seeing what comes back on this. Thanks.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in the interim, we did take up an item that was not identical to this, but very similar, and had a whole documentation of firearms that was discharged, case shelling that were found, et cetera, et cetera, times that spot shooter was engaged. I'm trying to go back and figure out which agenda it was on, but it was during this calendar year. So it was either January or February. So in, in the meantime, if you're looking for something pressing, I think it went back at least three years. I don't think it went back the full five that you're asking for. But particularly if constituents are asking for it, there is something that you can turn them to in the meantime.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, on that, I appreciate the, our colleague pointing that out. Yeah, I remember that. I think it was a shot spotter related. It was looking for sort of efficacy. Okay, all right. Yeah, you know, I'd like to see this going back five years for some pre-pandemic data on that. And yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Would you like this to go to Public Health and Public Safety?
Sure.
All right. We'll refer that item to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.10 is an order by Counselor Gomez-Moakad, that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management provide an update on the building conditions analysis and renovation potential assessment of the Winter Hill Community Innovation School, and provide a schedule of the projected completion of this analysis and assessment.
Counselor.
This is just simply to, as I just stated, we're about to start a whole process with our school buildings. And this is just to keep ourselves honest and informed of what steps we're taking. So I think, as we know, we started what we called a feasibility study where we're stopping calling them feasibility studies. Because what it clearly is, we're doing a building conditions analysis and a renovation potential assessment for the Winter Hill community. This started, it was supposed to start in November, but I think it's now extended to June. So I'm just trying to get information. So we're very clear, we're really transparent. I think the community is very anxious to know that we are moving this forward. So this is simply information. So we're very transparent on what is happening.
Thank you very much, Counselor. We'll refer that item to the School Building Committee.
Item 4.11 is an order by Counselor Gomez-Moakad, that the Commissioner of Public Works report on leaks and building system failures that have caused the shutdown of municipal buildings, excluding school buildings, in the last five years.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
So I think often we're aware of what's happening in our, our school buildings, but sometimes we're not aware of what's happening in our municipal buildings. And there have been a few times when I talked to staff, for example, they couldn't go to work that day because the annex was leaking, or parking was leaking. And I think, again, as we're going to talk about the future of the 1895 building, I think we need to understand how much we are disrupting the daily lives of our municipal workers because our buildings are not in the best shape possible. So I'm trying to get that data. So remind us of the urgency of giving our municipal staff a better working conditions. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Thank you, Counselor. That item is approved.
Can we send it to Infrastruc, I'm going to say Infrastructure and Asset Manager.
Public Utilities.
Yeah, Public Works. Thank you.
That item is referred to Public Utilities and Public Works.
Item 4.12 is a communication by Counselor Gomez-Moakad conveying budget priorities and requests for fiscal year 2024.
All right. I would like, there's one item here I would like to talk about because this is an item for which Counselor Wilson and Counselor Klingon put an order back in January of last year. They had asked for staff to support the Wage Theft Committee. At that time, the administration asked for a job description of what, what is it that we wanted. And I had put in a request for a program manager for prevailing wage, living wage, and wage theft ordinance oversight under the Workforce Development Department or Division. This is something our city does not have. And we currently lack any department or position that has oversight of worker empowerment, labor compliance, and worker protections. With the passing of the Wage Theft Ordinance, the Worker Center has created via funding from the Job and Curation Trusts. The role of the Worker Center is limited to advocacy, education, and organization. It is staffed by only one full-time employee, and the city lacks a parallel position to support the work of the Worker Center. The Worker Center also has no oversight on the enforcement of labor laws and worker enforcement, including wage theft ordinance, or capacity to support oversight of labor agreements included in the community benefits agreements, as we recently saw in Union Square. Somerville's commercial base continues to grow, creating a new job, new job opportunities. This means we will soon have a larger, more diverse labor force. Amongst the new job creation industries is the hospitality industry, who has had in the past poor record regarding labor law compliance and worker exploitation. Construction activity has increased in our city, creating the opportunity for further worker exploitation in an industry that has historically been known for its violation of labor laws. In 2022, the Attorney General cited a 100 construction companies for violating state labor laws in Massachusetts. Reports show that the illegal theft of workers' wages has reached epidemic levels in residential construction in Massachusetts, which is a very type that we often see here. And I also would like to talk about federal immigration restrictions are exposing our immigrant populations to higher rates of exploitation due to the need to pay accrued debt when crossing the border and lack of legal status when entering the United States. Recent national reports show that this exploitation is even extending to minors. With the implementation of new local laws for labor enforcement, small local businesses should be better informed of labor laws. With a growing labor force in Somerville adding construction activity and the ongoing exploitation of immigrant workers, it is imperative that the City of Somerville create a program manager for prevailing wage, living wage, and wage theft ordinance oversight under a Workforce Development Department or Division. This position role, which is being modeled from a similar position in Boston, and I have a whole description of different roles, whether supporting the wage theft, compliance enforcement, documentation, training, and others. I want to give as an example, so when I first started the Wage Theft Ordinance, the affidavits weren't put together. We hadn't still put the Wage Theft Ordinance in our contracts. We now have, any municipal contract should have a payroll reporting, and we have, I don't think that's happening. So these are things, we, we're passing ordinances, and I say we should have wallpaper because we're simply not enforcing them. We don't have the implementation. So after a year and a half almost in the city, I feel it's really important. And I think, I think many of you support, I think we all support labor laws and fair labor, working conditions. And I think it's time that Somerville has something like a Workforce Development Department. Originally, I said, I'd put it on their economic department. The mayor said, don't put it, let us decide. So I hope the city really considers this. You know, I think it would be, it's great having the Worker Center, but we need somewhere here where the staff is educated more on what is wage theft. And it goes on, like, I'm at the point now, every time I meet with a developer, I give them a presentation, what is, or I have a slide deck that I'm happy to share with you. I said, we have a Wage Theft Ordinance. We're on, we're watching you. Don't forget about it. And I, and I, there's one developer said to my face, well, how do I keep track of the subcontracts of the subcontracts? And I'm like, that's exactly the problem. So I think we need to be really vocal about this. And it's not only about activism one end, but it's about enforcement at this end and awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Item 4.13 is an order by Counselors McLaughlin, Davis, Burnley, Panada-Nufeld, Wilson, and Ewan Campan, that the Director of Planning, Preservation, and Zoning draft an amendment to the zoning ordinances for transit-oriented height and density bonuses for additional affordable housing and other enumerated community benefits.
Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so people know, this is something I've talked about several times. This is just to get the ball rolling on a proposal that I'm working on with the Planning Department. This city council has often taken bold stances on very important issues. We've led the way across the country on issues with bold, revolutionary, groundbreaking decisions. And I stand on this occasion, or I sit on this occasion, and tell you all, for the people in this audience and the millions watching at home, that this is not one of those things. This is one of the most basic zoning proposals you can have around housing close to transit. Any, this is us catching up to the rest of the industrialized world, to places like Europe and Asia, and places that are building cities around their public transit while places in America are still fighting basic concepts like this. So what I'm talking about here, and this is a concept that I'll get fleshed out more, this is just to give the Planning Department something to work with, is basic zoning, height, density by transit, with a little Somerville twist, hoping to get some more affordable housing out of it by increasing our inclusion rate in exchange to allow development to build taller. And I think it's very basic. It's something that should have already been done. I hope we get it done this year. And I think it's very simple, not philosophically controversial, but it's one of those things that becomes controversial. And I think the most controversial aspect of this is that I envision it to be equitable across the city. And if you look and you see, almost all housing and development is being built in Union Square, any Somerville, in these areas that, that are allowing housing to get built. Whereas the new T stops we have, there are many communities and many neighborhoods that have minimal height and minimal affordable housing being built, when they're right next to T stops. And I go by these neighborhoods and just see one-story buildings, and just think, why can't there be a five-story building with a 25% inclusion rate or something like that? So that's all this is, is to get the ball rolling and hopefully get something done this year. I think it's not groundbreaking, but it is something that's important. And a lot of cities, even in Massachusetts, even the City of Somerville, sometimes fight to these things. So I appreciate the council's support on this. I hope to get it done. And just remember that I said it was controversial today. today. If some of you are wondering, what's he talking about? We'll see how it goes.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad would like to sign on. That item is referred to land use.
Item 4.14 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works address the accumulated trash along the guardrails on Chester Avenue.
Counselor Davis is here. Counselor McLaughlin.
Motion to approve.
That item is approved.
Item 4.15 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works address the accumulated trash by the intersection of Pinkney, Florence, and Mount Vernon Streets.
That item is approved.
Item 4.16 is an order by Counselor McLaughlin that the Director of Engineering pave the second half of Otis Street, which remains only half complete after infrastructure work.
That item is approved. And I believe Counselor McLaughlin has a late item that he'd like to take up at this point, too.
Counselor McLaughlin, is there a particular late item that you'd like to take up? I have a late item from Counselor McLaughlin in order that the Directors of Inspection and Housing Stability meet with this council to discuss strategies to identify new housing construction and renovation that may lead to displacement of tenants.
Thank you, Chair. And I also think Counselor Klingon wanted to sign on, and I think I should have added that the Director of ISD as well. So I'm sure all of you deal with this problem, but just this week, got an, got a update that a building in my neighborhood may be having a gut rehab and evicting all the tenants, talking to the city and community activists, and realizing that, you know, maybe there's a way that ISD can give us a heads up on any sort of permits that might lead to displacement of residents. So that's what this is. I've already spoken to the Director of ISD and the Housing Stabilization Department, so hoping that we can maybe have this conversation and see what we can do to collaborate together.
Did you have a committee in mind?
Yeah, housing's fine. That works.
All right. That item is approved and referred to Housing and Community Development. Counselor Strezzo, do you want to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Through you to Counselor McLaughlin. While I'm happy to take this up in HCD and expedite it as well, get it on the agenda. And as we, as I believe, have one counselor absent due to recent new baby, perhaps you would like to, yes, okay, we have our three. Awesome. We'll, we'll talk about that after. So then we'll have a hearty discussion and hopefully move for action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4.17 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Chief of Police and the Director of Communications and Community Engagement discuss with this council the viability of establishing a gun buyback event focused on those who may be a danger to themselves, including strategic outreach involving community partners in the healthcare industry.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, Chair. This is a topic that's, I believe is personal interest to many counselors in recent months. Massachusetts is relatively lucky. We have the lowest rate of gun suicides in the country, the fourth lowest rate of suicide of any state in the, in the country. Even still, but being one of the lowest. In 2020, we lost 134 residents across the state due to gun suicides. This is something that is, for anyone impacted by it, a tragedy, traumatic, destabilizing, and painful. And it is a crisis that our country is seeing more and more frequently as guns proliferate our streets and as our, quite frankly, our institutions fail to meet people's mental health needs and their economic needs. As I was discussing with a resident, how we could provide some kind of semblance of support for our residents that are struggling, it came to my mind that we really need to be addressing both of these things in tandem, in a way that I don't believe our community, or quite frankly, any community has, by really trying to ensure that folks who may be harmed to themselves, get guns out of their homes. Their gun buyback programs, broadly speaking, I think are sort of a mixed bag in terms of effectiveness. However, there, as far as I have seen, there has not been gun buyback programs that have specifically been focused on people who, through mood disorders or depression, could harm themselves and could, in exchange for giving up their guns, receive mental health supports and services. I have another item in here that gets into pilots and some of the institutions in our communities, such as Cambridge Health Alliance, which I've, I reached out to them earlier, earlier, and we're in preliminary discussions about how they could collaborate with the City of Somerville in order to host an event where people could be directly connected with healthcare providers so that when they seek help, when they show up, when they do the right thing, they know someone will be there to receive them. This, I think, is a, a really, really critical opportunity for our community to deal with something that, for decades, has actually plagued Somerville. I've looked in, I've done a bit of research into the causes of death in Somerville, and suicide has been one that has been a part of our community top five for a long time. And in fact, in the early 2000s, Somerville had a task force specifically dedicated to suicide prevention. And, you know, that, as many task forces do, they, they came together and eventually disbanded. The pandemic, I believe, has brought upon a wholly more exasperated, um, mental health crisis for our community. I think it is incumbent upon us to try to do as much as we can to ensure that our residents are connected to the services they need so that they can be safe and that they can feel cared for. That's going to take this city stepping up. It's going to take community partners. And it will hopefully be a model for other communities to really show that when we come together, we can actually prevent harm and death. But it is going to have to be, in my opinion, an all hands on deck attempt. And I'm hoping that this September during Suicide Prevention Awareness Week, which is in the second week of September, we can host an event where people can be welcomed with open arms and receive the supports that they need in exchange for dropping off guns that they may have harmed themselves with otherwise. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to sign on to that and thank the good Counselor for bringing this idea forward, which is a very positive, productive way to address a serious problem. And to be clear, like, we actually still do presently gun buyback programs in the city. We had a gun buyback program last June. But the problem is, is gun buyback programs in themselves aren't going to do anything if the community's unaware of it, if there's no community involvement in the process. And you can go back and look at, I encourage people to Google, if you have never heard of the Boston Miracle, which was a period of time in the early 90s in Boston when there was a serious rash of youth shootings. And gun buyback was one of the many tactics used at that time to lower gun violence to a dramatic level. But what, how, the way that happened wasn't because the city put out, hey, we're doing a gun back, buyback program. It's because community members showed up and said, let's get our friends to give their guns back and get people who need help to give their guns back. So I think this is a very positive idea. I think we do have an infrastructure in place to do it. And I would just add, too, that I wouldn't differentiate between, you know, a person who might harm themselves and a person who might harm others, because oftentimes, there's mental health issues at play in both of those. And ultimately, the, the ultimate goal is to get guns off the street, which is something that I strongly support. And I think, again, Counselor Burnley's point is, it needs to be a community involvement. It can't just be the council. It has to be the city, the council, city departments, and community members who are already very upset about what's going on in the community. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Counselor Davis wanted to sign on. So let's refer this to Public Health and Public Safety. Thank you very much, Counselor. Next item.
Item 4.18 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of Health and Human Services work with this council and community partners to determine if the city has a current pilot agreement with Mass General Brigham and other healthcare providers, and how mental health services can be a component of such agreements, particularly as part of a mental health gun buyback program.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. I spoke a bit to this just a moment ago, but I'll, I'll just add that in, in doing some more research on this, I did find that the City of Somerville had what at the time was considered or called a community services agreement with Mass General Brigham that was established, I believe, in 2014, set for 20 years for payments from Mass General to the City of Somerville. In that agreement, there is a section that says that it can be amended if both parties come to an agreement about the particulars. I believe that Somerville is a wonderful city to live in, but as an institution, the city lacks the, the human capacity to deal with the, the weight of the mental health crisis that we are under. We do not have the levels of staff, quite frankly, in my view, to serve our community in the way that it deserves to be served. But we are lucky in that some of the largest institutions in our state happen to call Somerville home. Mass General Brigham is, or at one point, the largest private employer in the state. It may still be. Cambridge Health Alliance, which I've, has been very responsive to this idea, has many divisions and programs regarding mental health services and staff. I would love to find a way for our community to partner with these institutions so that we can get human talent, so that we can get people to serve our community in partnership, and so that these needs can be met. And I think pilots is one way of doing that. And there are larger conversations to be had about our pilot task force and appointments there, et cetera. But whether it is through pilots or just by, you know, a handshake deal, I, quite frankly, I don't care because at this point, what I want to see is us getting services to the people that need them and them being able to go home safely without fear that they may not wake up the next day. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Which committee did you have in mind for this, Public Health and Public Safety?
Yes, please.
All right. That item is referred to Public Health and Public Safety.
Item 4.19 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the city solicitor work with this council to determine the legality of requiring businesses of a certain size to post in clearly visible spaces workers' rights bills, which shall include the right to form a union without retaliation and consequences for violating workers' rights.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. There are, you know, to, to circle back to where we started this meeting, we have seen a, what I consider a rash of anti-union behavior in Somerville in recent weeks and months from some of our largest private employers that, you know, in some cases, I previously would have said I was very proud to have in Somerville, and now I have to question their commitment to our city's values. I want every worker in this city to know that they have the right to organize, that they have the right to not face retaliation, that they do not have to live with wage theft, and that we, we are a, I don't, I'm trying to use my words very carefully. We are a compassionate and caring place to live, work, and play. There are a number of, I think, tricky legal questions to be resolved here, which is why I'm asking for the support of our Law Department and city solicitor on this. But I would love to, for every person to be able to know that if their boss tells them to do something that they think is illegal, or denies them something that they have a right to, that they have resources and opportunities to fight back against that, and that the city as a whole will have their back. So I would love to send this to Legislative Matters and have some conversations there with the Law Department.
Excellent. Counselor Gomez-Moakad?
So I think, I can, I'm trying to find it, but within the Wage Theft Ordinance, there are some posting requirements. I don't think it's all projects. So you could piggyback into adding that to, for example, every time you get a license, you could, and I almost, there's, it is somewhere in there. It might not be specifically every time you get a license, you need to post this. This is something I've been, actually, the Wage Theft Committee making sure it's available, and it's available in multiple languages, the same way you have to post, like OSHA. So I think, I would urge Legislative Matters to look at the Wage Theft Ordinance, and maybe we piggyback it into that. Okay?
Counselor Burnley.
Just really quickly on that point, I really appreciate that recommendation from my colleague from Ward 5. And I, as Chair of Licenses and Permits, I was also thinking around, you know, we, as a city, as a state, as a society, we do require certain postings. Some of those come from higher levels of government than, than municipalities, but I, I have seen this council in the past require certain postings, both in the case of crisis pregnancy centers, as an ordinance last year mentioned. There are postings regarding public space, privately owned public space that we've discussed in the past. We, people's fundamental rights as workers should be on that list if we have our choice of what we can declare. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I want to just say, this is why we need a program manager for wage theft and, and other items, because we need someone to not only say you have to post it, but someone who checks and makes sure you posted it.
Next item.
Item 4.20 is an order by Counselor Burnley that this council work with the Worker Center, Licensing Commission, and local unions to discuss workers' rights and how violations of those rights could impact licenses and permits.
Counselor Burnley.
You know, I don't want to jump on my soapbox again on the same points over and over again. Somerville, Union Town, I'm going to start, quite frankly, let me not say anything that will get the city sued, but I'm going to be casting a pretty harsh eye on institutions in this city that treat their workers poorly. And I'd love for this to go to licenses and permits so that we can actually have, you know, a broader discussion and presentation around what rights workers have and how, how our city can actually enforce those laws and rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Should this go to licenses and permits?
Can I, a quick comment. So the AG did a great presentation for the Wage Theft Committee on all, I'm, I'm happy to share with you that presentation. I'm going to share it with the whole council and also the Greater Labor Council presentation so that you all have it. Again, if you have developments, give them this material, but that will give you some ideas, working with the AG's office, because there's things like sometimes number of employees. Because there's things like sometimes number of employees, for example. Things are triggered by number of employees. But if you have a restaurant in Somerville that owns multiple restaurant, Restaurant Chair, it's an additive of all of those. So there's a lot of, you know, things that people should be made aware. And that's something, just so you know, in the Wage Theft Committee, we talked about an outreach to small businesses to really educate them on what is wage theft. That's our, if we can get the Workers' Center re-staffed, that's our next mission. And I think it would be great to do it for Labor Day.
Thank you, Counselor.
Item 4.21 is in order by Counselor Burnley, that the Director of Parking, Director of Mobility, and Director of Communications and Community Engagement discuss with this council efforts to publicize the state's recently implemented Vulnerable Road Users Law, including requesting signage from Mass DOT detailing the safe passing distance for vehicles nearing vulnerable road users, such as cyclists.
Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Counselor Burnley.
Bikes, bikes, bikes. We've been talking bikes, folks. And luckily, a new law statewide has gone into effect, Massachusetts Vulnerable Road Users Law, which, amongst other things, really does spell out and extend slightly the amount of what's called "safe passage distance" between vehicles and cyclists. It is now a matter of law that you see a bike, you're supposed to get four feet away from them. So, well, if you're driving a car, mostly. Their, MassDOT does have signs that spell this out and a process by which municipalities can request those signs. I would love for, as we build out our Bike Network Plan, to have those signs out there. Because I cannot tell you the number of times I've been on a bike and a car has gotten much, much closer to me than four feet. There are other elements to this law as well that I would love to spell out. Mass Bike has a great document about it. And I just want to make sure everyone is on the same page about how we treat each other safely and kindly on our roads. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson and then Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Just a quick note on that.
Counselor Wilson first. Nice try.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I want to thank my colleague at large for bringing this forward. I hear a lot of stories from folks, I mean, there's a term for it, punish passing, right? It's when a enraged driver lets the cyclist know that they don't appreciate their existence by cutting it really close, cutting right in front of them. Punish passing is illegal now because of this law, and I think we need to let people know about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Well, I thought I looked like Counselor Wilson. Just a, just a quick note. I don't know if you've seen the signs in Cambridge about passing left, I think it is, on the bus stops. It would be that kind of signage, because it's very visible just to put it on our bus stops. It's a suggestion.
All right. That item is approved with a copy to traffic and parking.
And the next item is item 6A, a report of the Charter Review Special Committee meeting as a committee of the whole on April 12, 2023.
Thank you. Counselor Scott. And just before, colleagues, as you can see, we have a lot of committee reports, so keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our committee report is, covers are very tight and efficient, three hours. It covers it very well for members of the public. We are in the very final stages of our review. There are nine items for returning language proposals that were queued up. We got to three of them and had some very thoughtful discussion. I definitely recommend people, it is a tight and useful three hours to watch, talking about some of the biggest issues that this council has always been consistently focused on, the ability to obtain advisory legal counsel, the confirmation process for department heads, and the budget timeline. There are six more that I have on my list. And for colleagues, I have been informed that the administration is also working on languages for two completely unrelated provisions that we have not heard from them about. And just for your, just for your information, I want to make sure to pass those along. They are working apparently on language to modify the Access to Information provision and language around the temporary appointments to multiple member bodies. So I have not seen those, those changes. I don't believe they have the language finished yet, but, Mr. President, if it's, if it's helpful, just on a scheduling note, we could keep to our anticipation to having a public hearing in one month, or we could push it out until we feel like we've got these questions resolved. I would tend to be inclined to carry on with the public hearing on its scheduled date, even if we haven't come to final agreement on everything, because maybe the public would like to weigh in on that. And I would like to make sure we do it before we get into the depths of finance committee scheduling. So I just offer that. And if we have, if my colleagues or you have thoughts on that, please provide them as comments on the committee report. Otherwise, I would ask that the committee report be accepted as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to have to think about if I have input on that, and I'll certainly reach out if I do. That committee report is accepted. Thank you.
Item 6B is a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on March 28, 2023.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We met on March 28 at 7:00 PM. All members were present. Also present were Kathy Pignateen, Library Director, Charles Breen, Chief Fire Engineer, Chris Majors, Deputy Chief, Anne Gill, Director of Human Resources, Hannah Crigio, Legislative Liaison, and Peter Force-Lee was our clerk. We took up a couple of items, one of which was the appointment of Michael Smith to the Public Library Board of Trustees. He was approved. We discussed the administration's update on this council's, so we discussed the hiring of firemen and how we can do better outreach and let the community know about upcoming tests and so on. And then the last thing we discussed was regarding efforts to update the firefighter hiring process since the reserve list has been eliminated. And there's extensive notes in there taken by Mr. Force-Lee. If anybody's interested, I would advise you to watch the video or go check out the notes. And I ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, that committee report is accepted.
Item 6C is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting as a committee of the whole on March 29, 2023.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. As our clerk mentioned, Finance Committee met in this chamber on March 29 as a committee of the whole for the purpose of identifying this council's shared budget priorities for FY 2024. All 11 counselors were present for a two-hour and 50-minute meeting. Since we were all there, I will spare you a full recap of the evening. We tried a somewhat different approach this year. We ended up with five shared budget priority resolutions: housing, out-of-school time, rodent mitigation, youth outreach, AKA Jesse's Van, and alternative emergency response. Subsequently, I've spoken with the administration and city staff about the meeting and the product of the meeting, those resolutions. For those concerned about individual counselor budget priorities possibly being overlooked, I can tell you, the folks I talked to were in the process of going through all of those individual memos, and they were definitely getting a lot of, a lot of attention. So I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to Chair Wilson for the report and for all of the organizing that went into this, this process. I will say that I came away from it feeling more positive than our first go at it last year, so I think a significant improvement. One thing I wanted to mention, and I thought about putting this in, originally intended on putting this in as sort of an item, but I felt like that was maybe a little, I don't know, could be misconstrued as being too adversarial, whatever. So I wanted to just kind of throw out for discussion. You know, during the process, there were a number of, as the good chair noted, there, all counselors had a significant list of items, and they're all here for the reading. But of the, of the process for sort of selecting the ones we would highlight, and I'll confess, I didn't go back and watch the whole meeting because I haven't had the bandwidth to in the past, in the interim. But during the process, I had thought that I had heard a pretty clear consensus, if not unanimous, support for including additional funding for city council staff in, you know, one form or another. And so, but that wasn't one of the items that we were presented to vote on. So I wanted to put it out there to, you know, maybe I got that wrong, and I know there were, I did go back. There were, there were four counselors who submitted, who included that specifically on the list. I thought I heard at least three or four additional voices of support for that, which would have put it before us for a vote. I wanted to, before we vote on this report, ask for thoughts from my colleagues as to whether I read that wrong, whether we would, might want to consider, and I'll certainly hear from the chair first, consider an amendment to include that item. Because to me, it's something that, you know, frankly, probably belongs in every council priority list until we have, you know, a significant, significantly more bandwidth from, from staff. We've seen from Mr. Salisbury how effective having someone with that expertise can be. And there's a whole bunch of different roles that we could have that I think would be to the benefit of the administration, to the benefit of the council, to the benefit of the taxpayers as well. So just wanted to put it out there. You know, if I, if it's not, if we would like the list the way it is, no worries, you know, no hard feelings. I just, I wanted to have that conversation before we let this list go.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, my colleague, for raising that. I almost mentioned that it's actually, I had it written up in my committee report and decided not to go into that. But I can tell you, we went back and looked at that after the meeting because there were questions at the end about the interpretation of Counsel McGlaughlin's proposal for city council zoning staff for the Land Use Committee. And we went back through everything, actually, to make sure, like, everything got picked up after the fact. And I can tell you, there's no scenario where any interpretation resulted in any material impact on the outcomes. In other words, not sufficient level of support.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I disagree, but I also don't want to rehash the entire conversation. The only thing I'll say in regards to the process is I do think from this last process, we reinforced the need for the city council rules, to me. The rules that we agree and vote on every year at the beginning of a council meeting. At the beginning, our first council meeting of the year, we all vote to approve city council rules, which means that we all approve them and we all agree upon them. And I felt like at this meeting, the rules were kind of, first of all, they weren't the council rules. They were made up that day. None of us really knew what the rules were at the time. And I would say that even the counting of the, the way the count went was kind of outside of what I would consider the rules. Having a recess, having one or two people calculate the votes, determining arbitrarily what counts as what. That was the issue that I had. So, and I don't, I don't want to belabor it any more than that because I understand that the process was to get consensus and get a message to the mayor's office that this is what we want. But I personally do believe that, you know, it's in the eye of the beholder, and it should really not be so open to interpretation. It should be, these are the council rules, and we're going to, having something be unanimous isn't as important as just getting the mayor's office to do something.
Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that, again, I went back, I watched the video. We went through all this. It frankly did not, absolutely did not reach the level of support that would have triggered including that. It did not.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Can I make a suggestion for next year? Can we write out, have like a memorandum of the rules very clearly stated of the process? And can I make a suggestion that maybe the way it works is each counselor rates their, they put in their recommendations and rate them, like what priority one, and then we can see how those across the line align, maybe? I don't mean to offend anyone. I just, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I would recommend that we don't try to come up with next year's process tonight. Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, maybe eight people didn't say, "I support Matt McGlaughlin's thing." But eight people said, "I support this, and this, and this," which all fall under city staff, city council issues. So, and again, it's like, we had a very long conversation about an item that was a clear division on, so that was not eight votes, but the chair determined it was eight votes. So I think we just got to follow the city council rules.
So we've gone back and forth on the exact same point several times. Counsel Wilson and then Counselor Davis.
I can't make this any more clear. Even if you considered, if you lumped this in with general support for city council staff, it did not reach the threshold. It did not. It categorically did not. The threshold that was used, yes. Even if you, under the most charitable view of this, it did not reach that threshold. I cannot make that any more clear.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to amend the report to add to the list of items being sent to the administration to include funding for additional city staff.
Motion before us. Discussion on the motion.
Sorry, correct myself. Staff for city council. Thank you.
Staff for city council. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you please elaborate specifically on what city staffs? So we're all on the same page, and I agree with you. But what that is defined as. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the president, so two suggestions. We, there were four items submitted among counselors' reports that related to this item. So I could amend the motion to include those four specific items. One was by Counsel McGlaughlin, myself, Chair Wilson, and I believe perhaps Counselor Penana-Nufeld. I can send those, though. And to the direct question, so that would be, in part, answer the question, you know, perhaps those, but I would, the intent is to leave this broad and sort of general. I think, you know, we could have that conversation in the budget, in the budget season. To that point, last year or the year before, Counsel McGlaughlin, as president, negotiated a city planner dedicated to the city council for zoning. And, you know, there was some discussion as to whether that would be under the city council or presumably under the clerk's office, or remain in the planning department. The decision was the latter, and that person got promoted. Great, very well deserved, but now we're without someone in that position. So I think, you know, putting it, wording, phrasing this so it would be staff for the city council specifically is intentional. And then, you know, we can have a conversation about what specifics, would be my thought.
So just so I'm clear, is the idea similar to the motions that we had in committee? It would be additional staff for city council and then list out the specific items?
To me, taking the same approach that we decided as a committee of the whole seems like the path of least resistance, so I'm perfectly happy with that.
On the item.
Mr. President, may I make a procedural suggestion? Rather than amending the committee report, because the committee report is the dispositions before the council for approval, might I suggest a motion simply to add that item to the submission of budget priorities to the mayor?
I thought that's what I tried to do, but obviously, I didn't do it quite right. So I would, by all means, take the clerk's good suggestion. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll just speak on the item. I want to be extremely clear that I'm very grateful to Chair Wilson and Mr. Salisbury for working on this. You know, I know chairing a committee like this is a ton of work. And, you know, to me, this is, I don't take this in any way or intended in any way of a criticism of that process as much as that meeting, from my perspective, happened very quickly, and I was learning in real time how it was happening. And having had time to reflect, this is something that I very much believe is a, is a council priority, and so I'll be voting in support of it. Any further discussion? Is there, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Anyone oppose? All right, the motion carries. Next item.
The next item is item 6D, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on April 11, 2023.
Counsel Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met Tuesday night for a fruitful 48 minutes with four or five members present. And again, congratulations to Counselor Penana-Nufeld and the birth of her child. We moved quickly through a nine-item agenda. We recommended that you approve tonight $54,445 in appropriation for renewing the Ash Tree Treatment Program, $600,000 appropriation for water and sewer contract treatment program, $600,000 appropriation for water and sewer contractual obligations for emergency work, a $50,000 appropriation for immigrant legal services, a $79,500 state grant for police overtime costs, a $28,000 state grant for costs incurred by the state mandated Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, that includes mattress recycling that you all have heard about here, $435,000 rescission to close the loop on the outdoor standalone public restroom appropriation previously approved. Two items that generate the most discussion were the water and sewer appropriation and the police overtime grant. Water and sewer director went through the positions vacant in his department that necessitate outsourcing the work. There was some discussion of plans to address these continued vacancies. There were questions on the grant application for the police overtime grant about the inclusion of six unfunded patrol officer positions that are being kept as authorized by the Mayor. Both these discussions are well worth watching on the video recording that I encourage all colleagues and the public to watch. We also marked as work completed an order from Councillor Clingan requesting a report on how cable franchise fee revenue has been used in recent years. Finally, we had a conversation about staff memos that we've been using in finance to handle potentially straightforward items before us. Councillor Kelly had raised some concerns about how the process was working. I've subsequently spoken with Councillor Kelly and Legislative Liaison Carrillo about this, and we're looking to standardize those memos and the process around them to arrive at a more optimal system, I'll say. I ask that you accept the committee report as submitted.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the Chair of Finance for that succinct report. I just wanted to highlight one thing in particular about the discussion we had on the water department. This was a $600,000 request of the Mayor to cover the operations of the water department through the contractors that they use for three months, for one quarter. And when we dove into that more, what we learned is that the entire frontline operations staff of the water department, the special heavy machine equipment operator, there are 11 of those positions, all 11 of them are vacant and have been since at least August when our director started. So I was staggered by this, and I know that those vacancies have been continuing to pile up over the years, but we literally have been working for at least a majority of this, well, functionally, three quarters of a calendar year, paying a contractor or two contractors from outside of the city to do literally every piece of this maintenance that we have. These are categorized as emergency repairs, but the reason why they are emergency is because we don't have anybody who can go out there and turn these valves. So I went and did a quick look, and when you add up the salaries, the total compensation from the FY '23 budget for all 11 of those positions who would otherwise be out doing this work, having good union jobs, probably with Somerville residents, their total salary cost for the fiscal year would have been $641,492. That's their all-in total compensation. What we are paying these contractors for one quarter is nearly that entire sum. We are, the ratepayers, the city of Somerville, are getting charged functionally four times as much for the service that we could be doing in-house. So I just wanted to highlight that for members of the public who might be watching and for my colleagues, and just continue to urge the administration to, rather than outsource these functions and jobs, to actually figure out how to compensate and hire union employees in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
So, because I, my understanding is we're competing with a private construction industry out there that's paying much better than we are, very likely. So have we done an analysis of what this, the equal position is out there and how much we have to increase pay? Or is there a shortage of labor out there?
Mr. President, I don't believe there's any shortage of people who would like good-paying jobs. I would encourage my colleagues to reach out to the head of the Somerville Municipal Employees Association that represents those positions. They have thorough analysis. Eddie Halleran's your guy.
I just want to, I... Sorry, I'm trying to understand. I'm very curious about this because of the data. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, that committee report is approved, and we have some roll calls.
Yes, Mr. President, that's going to put three items before the council for roll call votes. Before we do that, I did record the vote on the motion for the previous item, but just to get the vote on the committee report itself on record, can we do that one real quick? Item 6C.
Seeing no discussion, that item is also approved.
Thank you, appreciate it. So the next item before the council is going to be Item 23-0298, appropriation of $54,445 from the Street Tree Stabilization Fund for the 2023 Ash Tree Treatment Program. Whoo, boy!
Well done.
On that item, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is approved. The next item before the council is Item 23-0450, rescinding $435,000 from the Medical Marijuana Stabilization Fund appropriation of $591,442, approved on February 24th, 2022. On that item, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is approved. And the next item before the council is Item 23-0487, appropriating $50,000 from the Immigrant Legal Services Stabilization Fund for legal services for immigrants and asylum seekers seeking permanent residency. On that item, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Three times, yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is approved. The next item is Item 6E, a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting on March 30th, 2023.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting and approved a couple of things. We recommended work complete for the Director of Infrastructure Asset Management, Engineering and Public Works and the Office of Strategic Plan and Development, along with any other appropriate departments, work to develop a binding equitable citywide infrastructure master plan to guide the location and design for electrical substations and other infrastructure marked work complete. We had an item that was withdrawn, and we had an order from me requesting the 2014 zoning overhaul proposal, which our clerk graciously gave me. In regards to my earlier order about zoning, I would encourage people to look at that 2014 zoning and compare it to what actually passed in the end and see where housing is not being built, and you'll have an idea where I'm going for with my other proposal. Everything else was left in committee, awaiting updates, and I respectfully ask that this committee report be accepted or submitted.
Respectfully, it is approved.
Mr. President.
Councillor Scott.
On the item, I am fascinated and very much would like to see the documents provided for that item, 230174. I'm having a hard time figuring out how to get those in Legistar, so if there is...
Clerk wills, yeah.
They aren't in a draft, so they're coming to Legistar soon.
Wonderful. I will look for those anxiously. Thank you.
That item is approved.
And the next item is Item 6F, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on March 28th, 2023.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Legislative Matters met on the 28th. We did a number of things. The bulk of the time was spent, and there's items before the members here today which will require, actually, I don't know if they all require separate votes. Three of them require separate votes. So just briefly, two are home rule petitions that we've all seen and heard of before. One to for the so-called real estate transfer fee, the other for a tenant right to purchase. I won't talk much about those because people should be generally familiar with them. The, there's an item that relates to the sale of alcoholic beverages on Sundays and certain holidays, which should strike everyone as, wait a minute, aren't we already doing that? The answer is yes, we are. There may or may not have been an administrative step that was supposed to have been done years and years ago. Whether or not, in fact, was, should have been done at that time, it wasn't, and so we're doing it now just to make sure that everything's cool. So that, that's the only thing you need to know about that. And then the bulk of the time was spent on an amendment to the neighborhood council, Community Benefits Ordinance, so-called, or now to be called Neighborhood Council Recognition Policy. These were developed through a lot of work and conversations from the good President, from Councillor Scott, from members of the community. I know a number of folks who were involved in the Union Square Neighborhood Council. If I'm missing any other folks who deserve credit for that, please jump in when I'm done. But the, there's, so there's, the redline version that is before us this evening shows obviously the changes from the existing ordinance. A number of the votes that were taken in committee were changes to interim drafts, so feel free to go back and look at the committee minutes if you really want to understand why the changes you might be seeing on the agenda this evening don't necessarily line up because we had a few different drafts that we then adopted and then made some changes so that we could refine the language. The overall crux is to lessen the administrative burden on neighborhood councils, to make it more reasonable and rational, sort of in terms of what is required for folks to get together and organize and collaborate in support of representing the neighborhood. So that's, that's all I'll go into. You can review the minutes as well as the recording if you really want to get into the nitty-gritty. We talked a long time, and we did a lot of actual live drafting, which I always get a kick out of. So with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
On the item, I want to thank everybody in the committee for the work that they put in. This is something that I submitted, but I know it took a lot of work in the committee that I did not serve on, so I am very thankful for that work. And seeing no discussion, the committee report is approved, and now the roll calls within.
And the item now before the council is Item 22-1293, Amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 7, Article 9. On enrollment, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is ordained.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Just briefly, I said in the moment that I was going to be forgetting people that we should thank, and so I would be remiss not to thank our Legislative Policy Analyst Brennan Salisbury, as well as the Acting Special Counsel, Councillor Sackert, who put a lot of work into this as well. So thank you to them.
You're here.
The next item before the council is Item 23-0454, a home rule petition authorizing the city of Somerville to impose a real estate transfer fee. On the item, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Not without another public hearing. No, just kidding, yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is approved. And the last item coming out of the Legislative Matters Committee before the city council is Item 23-0455, a home rule petition authorizing the city of Somerville to enact right-to-purchase legislation. On the item, Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Clingan.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Councillor Burnley.
Aye.
Councillor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Panetta-Nufeld.
Councillor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councillors in favor and one absent, that item is approved.
Wonderful.
The next item is Item 6G, a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, meeting on April 10th, 2023.
We'll have Councillor Burnley give the report, and we'll also take up Item 966 with it, which is a public comment.
Item 9.66 is a public communication from seven residents submitting comments regarding Item 23-0466.
All right, Councillor Burnley.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Thank you, Chair. Through you, we had a, what is becoming a typically interesting and surprising licenses and permits meeting. We approved two items to extend hours to some of our local restaurants, which I am very excited about. We had Alfredo's Kitchen, which will be serving delivery specifically, not in store, but delivery until 3:00 a.m. Oh, my gosh, can't wait to eat. Chow &amp; Joy had a change of ownership and is maintaining its hours, but we had a great conversation about, with the folks who are taking over, and they are, it's their first business in the city, and we hope that they stay and do business here for a long time. And then we had to recommend against approval for one item because legally, we could not approve it. There was a applicant who was not legally allowed to be in the space that they were trying to operate business from. We gave them an additional month to resolve that issue, and it, to our understanding, had not been resolved. So I, I'm starting to believe that, you know, car dealerships are not always, you know, doing what they should be doing, but, you know, that is what due diligence is for, and that is why we have city processes to ensure that everyone is following the law. So with that, I will submit this report to be approved.
Thank you very much, Councillor Burnley. Any discussion? I'll just add, as the ward councillor, one of these items, the used car dealership on 631 Somerville Ave, many people might be familiar, this is one of the dealerships kind of across from Forge. I very much wish that we could have granted this approval, it's just that the new owner of this property does not appear to have authorized this use to continue, and that is the legal fact of the matter. I'm disappointed in the outcome, but that's where we landed. Thank you, Chair.
Can we go on a minute?
That committee report is approved.
Item 6H is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, meeting on April 4th, 2023.
Councillor Kelly.
President, thank you. We had a fabulous three-item meeting on Tuesday, April 4th. We took up three items. One related to annual reporting on fires, one related to cooling and particularly warming centers, but we also discussed cooling centers, and the last related to COVID-19 vaccination and testing. There is some fabulous data that's been shared with the clerks and should be uploaded to the agenda item regarding reporting on fires, a number of folks displaced, the services provided. We had a really fantastic conversation with ISD, OHS, and the Fire Department around how we actually respond to fires. The administration was unwilling to commit to an annual report. However, did say they would update the council on the statistics and the data that was provided around fires. So for Counselor Burnley, Counselor Scott, who put this item forward, no annual report, but you can get this data on an ad hoc basis going forward. In terms of the warming centers, we discussed the process for how the warming centers went in the past few cold snaps. We also discussed setting them up more permanently moving forward. And the Director of Health and Human Services said that there was going to be a pretty robust debrief of how the process went this year, so that we can establish them, you know, in an ongoing basis. We also took the opportunity to discuss cooling centers in the summertime, since we're getting closer to the summertime. The Director of Health and Human Services did note that we are talking about kind of two different populations when we discuss warming centers versus cooling centers. Typically, when we're targeting folks for warming centers, it's unhoused people who don't have shelter and don't have access to space that would keep them warm. Versus cooling centers are more traditionally targeted for older folks who may not realize that their body temperature is getting up to a level that is unsustainable for them in the summer times. That said, there are cooling centers that have been designated, like the library, for example. But we'll, of course, continue this conversation in the summertime around the cooling centers. And then the last piece around COVID-19 and the federal government dropping their public health emergency, as well as Governor Maura Healey dropping her public health emergency and how concerning this is for residents of Somerville. The city will be continuing some COVID-19 testing and vaccine clinics on an ongoing basis and hoping to integrate it more with the private market, which is moving most of that into insurance. I will say, we did ask, you know, how do we flag and make sure that folks who are not insured will still have access to services? And the Director of Health and Human Services assured us that nobody will be turned away. So with that, Mr. President, I would like to have this report accepted.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no discussion, that committee report is approved.
Item 6I is a report of the Committee on Traffic and Parking, meeting on March 27, 2023.
Counselor Gomez-Milcod.
Yes. So everybody who's present in our meeting on March 27, we began the discussion with the equity study on bus routes. Basically, the city's going to a Free Pass program. They're collecting data from 2022. There was some discussion about students' passes extending into the summer. There was, and there was still interest in free bus routes from Counselor Wilson and Counselor Ewan Campen. We agreed that we will ask, after the end of the school year, where the Freeze Bus Pass Program has been extended, we'll ask, I'll put in a new order to ask for data to see how effective this program is. The next item we talked about was about high-visibility flexible bollards at entrances of the community path. It turns out that all the sections of the community path built by Mast Dot does have, will have bollards. The administration feels, Director of Engineering feels like this is more dangerous, in a way, for bicyclists and folks in the, in the community path. Not dangerous, but it just impedes passage. So what we have agreed to is that we're going to wait till the bollards get installed in the Mast Dot section, and then we'll see how they're working. And maybe we can push the administration to put in, we're mostly concerned about Willow, entrances at Willow and Cedar, the existing bike path. Counselor McLaughlin, you have your sign at Mount Pleasant Street and Perkins Street. You got one the other day as well, by the way. We talked about traffic calming on, I'm sorry, around the Winter Hill School, and I advocated for that. And they will be following up on that. We talked about, to death, about the infamous expansion joint on the Metro Street Bridge. We got quite a detailed analysis on expansion joints. And finally, we did discuss the Hawk Signal, another item that has been a hot item for quite a long time. I think the administration, the engineering is, would consider a raised crosswalk, but then this goes into the pool of competing with every other item on the list. So, and I ask that it be a priority fix, and that is it. I recommend that it be accepted and submitted. Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is approved.
And that brings us to item 7.3.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would ask that we waive the readings of items 7.3 to 7.15, and ask those be sent to Finance. Thanks.
Those items are referred to the Finance Committee.
The next item is item 8.1, an officer's communication from the Retirement Board, notifying the City Council of a vote in the May 30, 2023, meeting regarding a 2023 cost-of-living adjustment for eligible retirees.
You've been notified. The item is placed on file.
Item 9.1 is a public communication from John Fragioni and Agostino Fiola, requesting the adoption of an amendment to the zoning ordinance map to change the zoning district of 295 to 297 Medford Street and 93 Walnut Street from MR3 to MR5.
This item and the next are referred to land use, and we can waive the reading of 92.
That brings us to item 9.3.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, thank you, for your in-flight entertainment. We have items 9.3 through 9.65, as well as 10.3 and 10.4. Now, if you have not had the chance to read these wonderful items, there are several dozen about renewing drain layer licenses, which, you know, everyone loves a good drain layer. But the hot-ticket items are that we are beginning Porch Fest season, and Flying Turtle is applying for space at Porch Fest. Never heard of them, love the name, I want it. Okay, so there's that. We have a Tufts is having a 5K and a 6K, because they want to outdo themselves, apparently. And Davis Square's Farmers Market is coming back to town very soon. If anybody in the Davis Square area has space for a shed, the Davis Square, the mass Farmers Market folks are really looking for a shed, and they have not been able to position one in the lot where they typically do work, have not been able to get permission from the city. Yes. But if anybody has a space where they can operate near their site, they would love to have a shed for their perishables. And they do great work. They work with Flatbread across the street, so that tomatoes and cheese that comes straight from the Farmers Market goes into the pizzas and the cheese and the food right across the street. So that's on the horizon. They're going to have some wonderful events. They're going to have an event with a goat. Exactly. This year, they're going to have an event with a goat. They're trying to have some partnership, they're trying to work with Flatbread potentially to have, you know, sort of a beer garden. You know, there's some legal stuff around that. We'll talk about it later. But wonderful, wonderful, fun things are going down in Somerville. As you can see, very prepared to talk about this. Also, the Community Growing Center is very excited about having an Earth Day event. So all the holidays that you can want, goats, Earth Day, flying turtles, come into Somerville. So I would move that these items, once again, 9.3 through, that be approved with exception or comment from Counselor Scott.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask that 34 through 36, and then items 40, 44, 45, and 50 be sent to committee. There's just some questions about those properties that I'd like to make sure you have time to follow up on before we approve the license.
Clerk, did you get those numbers?
34 to 36.
That's correct. Then 40, 44, 45, and 50. Hopefully, we'll be able to address them, and you'll just be able to refer them right back out. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I would...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Don't want to speak out of turn. I am very curious about these items. In particular, I will note that Mercedes-Benz of Boston, which, you know, is very near the good Counselor on Ward 2's area, is having an event very soon as well that is not on this list, but is a public-type event. So lots of exciting things. Maybe somebody in our great town will get a Mercedes, and then they can let me send the passenger seat, because I do not drive. Thank you.
All right. So I'm not going to repeat all the numbers, but our clerk has them. The items that Counselor Burnley waived the readings and approved are approved, with the exceptions of the ones going to committee as notated by Counselor Scott.
And that brings us to item 10.1, a communication by Counselor Wilson, conveying the draft schedule for the fiscal year 2024 budget review.
Communicate with us, Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I want to take a first stab at a budget season calendar and get that out to you as early as possible. As I mentioned, last night in Charter Review, when this came up, we're facing a challenge this year with the earliest possible approval date of June 22. The good news is we're looking to get the proposed FY 2024 budget uploaded and released nearly a week earlier than last year. The schedule calls for that to be released on Friday, May 26. That would give us the holiday weekend and nearly a full week to review it before the mayor's presentation, the first departmental budget hearings. Similar to last year's approach, we're going to build in days off for other committees to meet and for the Finance Committee members' mental health. We're looking to minimize committee the whole, with only the first night, public hearing, public safety night, and cut night, being committee the whole, same as last year. We'll again have a Google form to capture counselors' questions on departmental budgets, and those pre-submitted questions are going to be answered ahead of time by staff memo, just to cut down on the amount of time we need to spend in these meetings. Different this year, we're looking to take up just schools on the first night. Then we're also looking to fit in some of the really straightforward departmental budget hearings ahead of that public hearing on June 5, on that same night, so split that into two separate meetings. Basically, we're looking at seven and a half regular meetings, seven and a half nights of regular meetings versus five last year. So we're hopeful that this allows us to be done a little earlier than last year. We all stated goal of being done by 9:00, to prevent it going into overtime. We're going to be asking for conciseness and brevity from everyone, counselors, administration, city staff. One programming note, we're looking at 6:00 meeting times for remote meetings and 6:30 p.m. start times for in-person meetings. So I'll ask that this actually, this item be sent to Finance to allow us to have a discussion with Director Masturboni on this process on April 25. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wilson. That item is referred to Finance.
Item 10.2 is an order by Counselor Klingon, that physical copies of City Council agendas be available in Braille in the City Council Chamber at the start of each council meeting.
Counselor Wilson and Kelly would like to sign on. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, so, you know, as many of our good colleagues around this horseshoe have been advocating for, fighting for, an embosser, which creates documents into Braille. I know that there's the Commission on Persons with Disabilities, they do, they have been able to connect with the Perkins School. But the reason why I put this specific, the Perkins School, around like getting some documents translated. And I understand that, like, thinking about all the meetings that we have and all of the, just, just the sheer number of meetings and the sheer number of documents, and that kind of tends to get a little daunting and overwhelming. But as I was sitting here a few weeks ago, you know, we have these paper copies out here on the, around the horseshoe of the agenda. I just, I think this was the push we need to get this embosser, so that the clerk can, you know, before the meetings, run off a few copies of the agenda in Braille, so that upon request, if someone was to come in, it would be available. So I really think if that's, if we start there, that's, you know, the very least, we're only in person for these meetings. So I think it makes sense that if we could just finally get one of these devices and get these agendas in Braille for these in-chamber council meetings, I think that's a good start, and I think we need to get that device now so that we can kind of get that going, that process going. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.